Everybody, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat, we'll get started here in a minute. But before we get started, it's a privilege to have Father Rob Wood from St. Aidan's Church here to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Let us pray. Gracious Lord, Heavenly Father, we give you humble thanks for the gift of life and love, and for all the blessings of this life. Open our eyes to see your hands at work in the world about us, a world that has this country, this state, and this city of Milton, and all who work for her common good, and for all who serve the people here. Whether it's the money in the budget, or the people on the streets, or all the things that happen under these roofs, or out in our soccer fields and ball fields. For all the people who have moved here, for all the backgrounds they have come from, we lift them up to you and remember the gifts that they bring, and the gifts that we try to bring out in them through building a better city, a better state, and a better world in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight, and also your daughter. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September 9th, 2015, to order. So if you'd please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the September 9th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call, for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coates.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent, and Councilmember Rick Mark is on his way, I believe. Councilmember Hewitt is absent for the record. Tonight, we are honored to have the sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two, to the left base, to the front. It's always an honor to have the sons, as well as the daughters of the American Revolution here with us tonight, so we appreciate you being here. So if you'll please call the next item on our agenda.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15, 233.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 15, this of 233.
Second. Do I have a motion from Councilmember Thurmond, second one from Councilmember Coates, for approval? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name's called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. So do we have any general public comments?
We do have two cards, sir. The first one comes from Bernard Wolf.
Good evening, I'm Bernard Wolf. I think most of y'all may know me. I live at 1,000 Lackey Road, and I'm talking on behalf of Lockaponey. Before I talk, I would like to say I've attended, I think, all the meetings on the conservation use thing. And as a citizen of Milton, I want to tell y'all how much I appreciate what you do. These meetings are, must be tough for you all, because you must feel like you don't have any friends, everyone's mad at you, and the work you do involves a lot of drudgery. And I just don't see how you all do it, and we owe you all a bunch of thanks, and I mean that sincerely for you. I don't, I have a business engagement that's probably going to keep me from attending the meeting of the Conservation Subdivision Ordinance on the 21st, and I wanted to take this a chance to go through a couple of things, my opinion on it. I represent Lockaponey, which is probably the largest land assembly in Milton. It also includes Roswell. It's been a, the idea of Lockaponey is to create a Serenby North. I think y'all are familiar with Serenby, something very special done a very special way. I've spent three years of my life in studying conservation development and all the elements of it, and these include keeping the natural features of the land as a primary priority, new development strategies, energy-efficient technologies, wastewater treatment technologies, solar energy and its suitability in our area, neighborhood dynamics, community, and privacy, and things such as that. I need to mention that the technology of all this is moving forward rapidly into this new type of development. We're not, I don't think, from all the meetings I've heard, that we're there yet in terms of having a good format for conservation development. My feeling is still, I think the regulations and the context is more lots versus conservation development, or is we are doing it, which is a community, and it's like a blank canvas, and how do you look at the entirety of the community and have houses placed in this community in a way where you're maximizing the natural features of the property, maybe enhancing them, and then the home is, the lot is basically de-emphasized in favor of the features of the community. It is something quite different, and it would require some thought on how to do this. The problem we've had is all the factions are at odds with each other during the 20th century type development, of which is lots, you clear and build the houses on it. The conservation development, when I got involved in this, I was told it embraces development, but it does it in a way where it satisfies the preservationists, and I am very much a preservationist. The developers, the city, the landowners, all of that come out ahead with this. The, I really strongly recommend that you all, at this time, give more thought before you start codifying things. It's up to you all if you do it permanent, or if you want to just tear the thing and give it more thought, but it does need to have more consideration, and I'd love to be able to share that with you. One thing, I want to invite everyone on the city council collectively or individually, come out and see us at Lockaponey. It's a unique place. It takes me about 30 minutes to explain the concepts and show you, and then take on the trails and show you how it works. Please come give me, you know, just a few minutes notice. The other thing I recommend is, why don't you all invite Steve Nygren, who is the person that developed and has caused Serenby to be established and evolve, and tell it where it started, how we got there, and the success of it. I know he's available, but that's my comments for tonight, and again, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Sudi?
And our last comment comes from Jack Linden.
I'm Jack Linden. Live at 14810 East Bluff Road, and I wanted to make a few brief comments tonight on behalf of the Milton Rose Green Committee. We have a really busy month, next month and a half, and I wanted to mention to you some of the things that are going on, and compliment the city and the council for letting these things happen. The first one I'd like to mention is this Saturday, we're doing our usual bulky trash collection with the city of Roswell. It's going to be at the Public Works Facility over on Hemby Road. That's from 8:00 in the morning until noon, and they shut the place down at noon 01, so don't be late. The other is, that same day in the afternoon, from 1:00 till 4:00, the local Boy Scout Troop, Troop 3,000, is having their biannual recycling event. It'll take place over at the Birmingham Church on Birmingham Highway. And that event, they will be collecting, shredding paper, collecting paper for shredding. They'll also be collecting sheet metal, electronics, and, what was the other one? I guess that's it, sheet metal and electronic. So, and this is an important fundraising event for them. They do charge $5 a box for the paper shredding, and they will be glad to accept any donations people want to give. The next one is, on the 26th of this month, we're doing a paint and chemical collection, household chemical collection event. This is our second one this year, thanks to you folks giving us another boost in the budget so that we can put on a second event. We had huge response to the first two that we did, and had to, actually had to cut off registration a couple of weeks ahead of time, so hopefully the demand will start going down as people begin to clear this stuff out of their basements and their garages. That event is going to be in the back parking lot at Cambridge High School, starts at 9:00 in the morning and goes until 1:00. That's the Saturday, the 26th. And the last event I'd like to mention is our yearly Rivers Alive event, which is our stream cleanup. This year, we will be gathering at the Bailey Farming Gardens out on Hickory Flat Road, and so far, we've gotten a tremendous response from volunteers. Actually going to have trouble finding enough streams for them to clean up, I think, this year, but we've got people coming out of the woodwork for this event. So, wanted to thank you all for your sponsorship of these, and thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other public comments, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Okay. If we can move on to the consent agenda then, and if you wouldn't mind sound the items.
Our first item, approval of the August 10th, 2015 work session meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 15, 234. Next, approval of the August 17th, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 15, 235. Next is approval of the August 20th, 2015, special called council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 15, 236. Approval of a right-of-way easement between the city of Milton and Sony Electric Membership Corporation for the installation of electrical service at Bell Memorial Park. This is Agenda Item Number 15, 237. Next, approval of an addendum to the professional services agreement, generally described as city of Milton building plan review and inspection services, Agenda Item Number 15, 238. Next is approval of the following subdivision plats. The Manor Enclave Final Plat, Create Lots 8 through 44. North Point Forest Final Plat, Create Lots 1 through 34. 13132 Bethany Road Minor Subdivision Plat, Create Two Lots. Mirafield Park Final Plat, Create Lots 1 through 14. John W. Stanhope and N. C. Stanhope Minor Subdivision Plat, Create Lots 1 through 3. Next, number seven, is approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and Funfair to provide event services for the 2015 Crab Apple Fest, Agenda Item Number 15, 240. Our eighth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and Crab Apple Community Association regarding responsibilities and obligations related to co-hosting of the Crab Apple Fest, Agenda Item Number 15, 241.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous on this consent agenda. Okay, so if we move on to reports and presentations.
This evening, we are honored to be giving proclamations recognizing Constitution Week, presented to the daughters of the American Revolution and children of the American Revolution, Martha Stewart Bullock Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, Chesta T. River Chapter, and the Sons of the American Revolution, Piedmont Chapter. These are being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
Thank you, Sudi, and want to welcome the daughters and the sons and the children here tonight, and always happy to see you come over here to Milton. For those who live in Milton, I'm glad you're here too. Tonight, from the Martha Stewart Bullock Chapter, we have Paula Nelson, who's a regent, Carol Bryant, who's Constitution Week Chairman, Mary Simons, US Flag Chairman Person, Ann Caverly, Marguerite Dial, Jennifer Gorrell, Catherine Jimenez, and let's see, this daughter, I believe, is Elisa Jimenez. Is that true? Good, got that right. Also, welcome Joyce Mortensen, Regent of Chesta T. River Chapter, Carol Woodrich, Constitution Week Chair, Dulles Britton, Committee Member, and Monty Johnson, Milton resident. Welcome. I'll read this proclamation, and afterwards, we should all come up front and center, and we'll have a photo op, but I don't want to leave out my brothers from the Sons of the American Revolution, Bill Cable, Rick Reese, and Paul Prescott, our color guard. Proclamation for Constitution Week 2015. The Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice, embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by men. And whereas, September 17th, 2015, marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Clause 915 guarantees the issue of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. This Constitution Week, we, the city of Milton, urge all citizens to study the Constitution and to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship in our republic, functioning under the superb body of laws, the Constitution of the United States of America. Now therefore, Joe Lockwood is mayor of the city of Milton and city council proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in the city of Milton, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, presented to the Martha Stewart Bullock Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, Martha Stewart Bullock Chapter, Children of the American Revolution, Chesta T. River Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this, the 9th day of September, 2015. Y'all please come forward.
Get a camera out.
He missed the picture.
No, I missed the camera. I missed the camera deliberately. Again, thank you very much for being here tonight and accepting that proclamation. All right, Sudi, if you will move on to the first presentation, if you could please read those items.
First item under first presentation, consideration of RZ 1515 to amend the rural view shed within the rural Milton overlay for single-family type uses, Section 64-114A. Agenda Item Number 15, 242. Next, consideration of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 15, 243. Our third and final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal 2016 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 15, 244. This was discussed at the August 10th, 2015 work session.
Sir, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Coates, second by Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, and Sudi has, I'm sure you have on the record now, Councilmember Mark is here. So we'll move on to our public hearing. So if you'll please sound us.
Consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal 2016 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 15, 244. This was discussed at the August 10th work session. First presentation was this evening. Ms. Stacy Englis.
Good evening, council. So, the fiscal year 2016 budget covers October 1st, 2015, to September 30th, 2016. I believe it reasonably captures the direction of the council. We are projecting revenues to be $26,43,278. We're requesting, the requested expenditures are $25,945,944. There's an overage of $97,334, and we can discuss what we can do with that overage toward the end of my presentation. I'm going to give a high-level overview of the budget, where I go through and just kind of give highlights as we go through each department. I know that Chris has already presented most of this to you at the work session, but since this is a public hearing, I wanted to kind of go through it again. Please stop me whenever you need to ask questions, I'll be happy to do that. And this is also going to be discussed again at the work session coming up on Monday, and you will have another opportunity on September 21st, whenever it is presented before you again for approval. So going through the revenues, I believe that we were conservative, but not overly conservative, as we were directed by the council in our projections. So looking at property tax bills for 2015, they were sent out last week, and since I, I guess, put the budget together and put it in the agenda, I now have the real numbers of what we billed out for property taxes. So that is good news, actually. So for personal property taxes, we billed $207,000, which roughly equals what we billed out last year, but for real property taxes, we billed over $9.8 million. That's a million dollars more than we billed out last year. So, when we look at projections for FY 16, they are probably a little low. We are projecting $9 million, I'm sorry, $9,50,000, and I think we can take that up to $9.3 million, based on the collection rate. Normally, we collect around 93%, which would be $9.1 million of the taxes billed within the timeframe that we can accrue them back to the fiscal year. And then the projections that I put for FY 15, when I gave you what I thought that the FY 15 year would end, I used $8.8 million in my projections for FY 15. I believe, again, we're going to be close to $9.3 million. So, that's $300,000 variance that we can do something with. So, $300,000 variance for FY 15 added to the fund balance, and then FY 16, we can take projections up to $9.3 million. That's a $250,000 variance. Again, we can discuss what to do with that at the end of my presentation. That's good news. So I know that impact fees were brought up during the work session. Again, we have not included impact fees in our projections for FY 16 because they are not approved yet. I know that they are going to come before you in October, so we can look at that at mid-year to see how they're coming in, and we can better get an idea of what those projections would look like for FY 16. can better get an idea of what those projections would look like for FY sixteen. Moving on to expenditures. Now, do you have any questions about revenue?
No.
No? Okay. Moving on to expenditures. So to give some general highlights of that, we are not requesting any additional people, aside from the part-time conservation project manager that was directed by the council. We are putting, we put in a two-point-five market adjustment for employee salaries, and health insurance premiums increased by around fifteen percent. We stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We changed the structure slightly of the two plans that we currently offer, and we introduced an HSA to the employees. We have also shared some of that increase with the employees as well. So it's not all on the city itself. Mayor and council, in the mayor and council department, the expenditure request is our one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. There is an MNO initiative of two-hundred-thousand dollars for the green space bond initiative that includes appropriate planning and costs of the general obligation bond process. In the city manager's budget, there is expenditure request of seven-hundred-five thousand, two-hundred and seventy-three dollars. There's no significant change from last year's budget. And again, stop me if you have any questions about any particular budget. In the city clerk's budget, we are asking for two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, ninety-seven dollars, and the increase there are election costs. Now, if we do not have election costs, we will be reimbursed for the money not spent up-to-date, because I know there are some costs that Fulton County incurs whenever they're getting ready for the election. In the finance department, we're requesting four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. And there are two years left on the contract that we have with Malden and Jenkins to perform our annual audit. That's the only thing I want to point out in that department. In the legal department, we are still, no change over previous year, of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Ted Henkin. Information Technology Department, we are requesting seven-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. There is an MNO initiative, seventy-two thousand dollars, for additional project hours for VC Three, which is our third-party IT vendor. And this is to assist us with the developing and implementing an IT infrastructure plan for the new city hall and other facilities as they come online. Any questions so far? Okay. In human resources, we're requesting three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Again, there is an MNO initiative in this department as well of twenty thousand dollars, and this is to hire a consultant to perform an, an independent review of our salary and benefits package to ensure we remain competitive in the marketplace. In innovation and engagement, we're requesting three-hundred-and-six thousand, one hundred and five dollars. There's an MNO initiative of three-thousand-two hundred and forty dollars for a portable sound system that is comparable to what we heard at the Milton Library ribbon-cutting ceremony. I think that was a pretty good sound system for as small as it was. And again, this department is showing a decrease of almost fifty thousand dollars from last year's budget, primarily because of the design and implementation cost of the new, the city's new website. Going forward, we only have, we'll only be incurring a maintenance cost of a little over four thousand dollars a year. In municipal court, there is, we're requesting two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-eight dollars. There's also an MNO initiative in here, thirty-six thousand dollars for leasing space in the Alfreda Court facility, and I know Chris talked to you a good deal, a good deal about this at the work session. You'll also see in the capital improvement program, a one-hundred-thousand-dollar request for renovation of the court space over there. That was a, a general estimate. We're still narrowing down the cost of what that would be. I know that the IGA was crafted by Ken's office and is now over in their legal review with their attorney, so we're waiting on them to finish that legal review. Should be bringing that forward hopefully soon. In the police department, we're requesting four million, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. There's an MNO initiative for crime site imager of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And there's also, this, this department also requested the replacement of forty radios. This is to get them to TDMA capability. This is an anticipated expenditure whenever we transitioned over to the North Fulton Regional Radio Authority System and its requirements. And you'll also see that, a request for replacement in the radios in the fire department. Moving over to fire. There's a, the total, I'm sorry, total MNO budget that we're requesting here is five million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. There are three MNO initiatives in this department. A little over four thousand dollars for the Sparky the Dog costume to aid in our public education. Three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars for a Scott Safety RIT PAC Three, which is Emergent Air Supply System. One thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars for an advanced life support training center. Sorry, there is a fourth MNO initiative. For thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for landscaping, sod, and irrigation systems at stations forty-one and forty-three. Again, we're requesting to replace nineteen of the frontline radios, to bring them to TDMA compliance, and that's a hundred-and-ten thousand, two hundred dollars. That's the increase you see in the fire department. In public works, we're requesting two million, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. We restructured the community development and public works departments, moved employees to where they were, their functions or job responsibilities were more in line with the department function. And so there were three employees that moved from community development over to public works. Those three employees were the conservation, I'm sorry, the construction inspector, arborist, and the plan review engineer. So that would be Mark Law, Jimmy Sanders, and Mark Arall. They moved from community development over to public works. So you'll see, when I see, when I bring you the FY fifteen budget amendments, you see a budget amendment moving money from community development over into public works. When that amendment is done, the actual variance between FY fifteen budget and FY sixteen budget is very little. I mean, it's, it's about a relatively flat adjustment from year to year. Any questions? Okay. In parks and recreation, we're requesting one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. There are three MNO initiatives in this department. Fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for Broadwell Pavilion improvements, and this includes irrigation installation and sodding at, at Broadwell Pavilion. The installation of fans and possible removal of trees, and we'll bring that forward to you if that happens. Twenty-five thousand dollars for landscaping and lawn maintenance of our park facilities. And fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars to reclassify the revenue coordinator position to a manager level that would match assigned responsibilities for that position. The increase that you see in this department of thirty-four-point-eight percent of our last year's appropriations is directly related to the operation costs of Bell Memorial Park when we bring that park online. In community development, we're requesting six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. There's an MNO initiative, there are two MNO initiatives in this department. Fifty thousand dollars for a part-time conservation project manager, who will serve as the point of contact for conservation initiatives. And five thousand, thirty-one dollars to reclassify the pay grade of the city architect from thirty-six to thirty-eight to reflect the job responsibilities that he has. And I already talked about the, the decrease that was attributable, attributable to the restructuring in the department for moving employees. So that's why you see a decrease in that department. In economic development, we're requesting seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and there are no significant changes in this budget. Are there any other questions about general fund MNO budget requests or anything?
Any other questions? Bill?
Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
Reclassification of the coordinator to manager, has that position been filled?
No, sir. We haven't advertised for it yet. We were filling that right now with a part-time person, and we will be advertising it in October, I believe, to hire a manager, a full-time manager for that position, if it's approved in the budget.
And has not been advertised?
No, sir. We are using part-time person right now to get us through. Because we wanted to make, we wanted to get it to the manager level, we wanted to hire a manager level at that position. It's approved by you guys.
On the police side, we've gone, kind of gone up about thirty-three percent since two thousand and fourteen from expectations, and I'm just curious, that's a pretty high trend. Is that going to continue, or is that going to flatline, or?
It's going to flatline right now. I think there were some new people that were brought on, I can't remember how many, but there were new people brought on from FY fourteen to current. And again, a, a good bit of that is the replacement of the radios as well, so get, get those. You will see the replacement radios, the rest, the other forty coming forward to you next year. And we were trying to kind of incrementally get them transitioned over to the TDMA compliance, but I believe that we will flatline at some point. Now, I'm not going to say that we won't be asking for additional personnel. I, I'm, I can't promise anything right there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Rick?
I guess to, to add to that, so we don't, we're not adding any additional personnel right now in the police department, we're just maintaining what we added last year, so that count stays flat.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the capital improvement program. So for the total amount of the program request for this year, we're asking for seven million, three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. So to kind of give you a highlight of what we're requesting, almost one-point-three million dollars we're requesting to continue funding for the city hall project. We plan on paying cash for that project. There's three-hundred-thousand dollars being requested for land conservation. Almost eight-hundred-thousand dollars for our share of the remaining capital expenditures needed for the North Fulton Regional Radio Authority System. Four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand to complete the first phase of the live-fire training facility. Three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in fire and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in police for vehicle replacement reserve. We try to, you know, fund out that over the, over the, flatten it out, the request over the years, bless you, so that we can pay cash for the replacements. One million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in pavement management to kind of keep that in place and, and I guess at a certain standard. Four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand is going toward the Capitol at Birmingham Intersection Improvement Project. Five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to continue to fund the intersection improvement projects at Freeman Village Providence and Freeman Village Birmingham. And two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in improvements at Providence Park. And that's just to highlight, there's lots of other projects that we have going on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about any of those.
Any other questions? Chief.
Yeah, talk about the fun stuff. Fund balance. So in FY fifteen, taking into consideration the tax billing, we now project to have about nine-point-two million dollars in fund balance at the end of the year. Twenty-one percent of the operating expenditures in FY sixteen would be about four million dollars. So we consider anything over twenty-one percent to be surplus fund balance, and that goes, that can be spent toward cap, one-time capital improvement projects. So we're projecting that to be five-point-two million dollars in FY sixteen. So we talked about, in the, in the budget transmital letter, some of the things that we kind of came up with as, as, I guess, proposals to what to do with the excess funds. We talked about one-point-five million dollars going to the city hall project. This is to align funding with the design, design development estimates that we currently have. If you have any further questions on that card, I'd be happy to answer them. Two million dollars we're requesting to fund the acquisition of future parkland. Two-hundred-thousand dollars for sidewalks. Two-hundred-thousand dollars for dam repair and maintenance. Remember, we also talked about, in the, in the beginning, when I talked about property tax revenues, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars can be added to FY sixteen, and then we have ninety-seven thousand dollars left as an overage between revenues and expenditures. So that's another money, a little, a little bit of money I'm totally not able to add on the fly like that, but that's another pot of money that we can add to this fund balance surplus that we can use. So that's one-point-six-four-seven million dollars that we have left to allocate somewhere if you choose to do so. We're, we asked to put it in either Providence Park improvements or the Northwest Connector Intersection Project, or wherever you want to put it. We're kind of leaving it up to you. Do you have any suggestions, or you want to think about it, and let's talk about it at the work session on Monday? Okay? Well, that concludes my presentation tonight.
Okay. Any other questions for Stacy, or any other question ahead? Okay. So do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, now I'll close the hearing. Open up for any other council discussion. Okay, not hearing any, so I don't think we have any items on our zoning agenda, unfinished business, or new business, so we'll move on over to staff reports.
Yes, first up for the staff, I'm sorry.
The eliminated partner report.
First up for staff reports, we have the police department. Chief Krokoff.
I just want to briefly go over a recent reorganization that we had in, within the department effective the thirty-first of August. We broke the department up into three segments as opposed to the two that we have had all along. The new section is called the Support Services Division. That now joins the Uniform Patrol Division and the Criminal Investigative Division, and no, does not require any new bodies. The UPD will continue to be commanded by Captain McCarty. Their primary responsibility is everything associated with routine traffic patrol, and will, will be contained within the four patrol platoons. The CID, which is our investigative division, is going to continue to be commanded by Captain Huey. We are going to be adding a position, when I say adding, transferring from another location within the department into the Detective Division, which will improve our capacity with special investigations, criminal intelligence, and crime analysis capabilities. The SSD will be headed by Lieutenant Barstow. He was in the Criminal Investigative Division. He will now be running that division and reporting directly to me. Within that division, you will have the current Community Response Unit. Additionally, our records clerk, our accreditation positions, but their responsibilities will include overseeing training, policy, hiring, internal investigations, public information, crime analysis, schools and school crossings, and code enforcement. And this change was a direct result of a lot of the work that we did internally and a lot of the conversations that, that I, I had, and many of the assessments that we have done. What it's going to do, it's going to allow the two operational units to focus on executing strategy at the operational level, instead of wearing five different hats. We need to be more focused on improving our public safety outcomes and, as a department, and that's what that is going to allow us to do. Now, I will, just to bring it back another step, the SSD also allows us to centralize our administrative function, and we have, we've been a little decentralized when it comes to administrative function. I'm in favor of decentralization when it, when it comes to some of the other functions, like the patrol function, which empowers the officers on the street, but when it comes to the administrative function, centralization, it, it, we need uniformity when it comes to the administrative function, and we'll achieve that through this, this reorganization. It'll also allow us to better balance out how we're using our human resources. There were some that were being used somewhat inefficiently, and I, I believe it's just because of the, the changes that we've had over time and without the reorganization that needed to follow. In my message to the officers that I sent out, I'll, I'm going to just repeat that to you, these changes are not a result of any, of any failures that have been, that have gone on over the years. They're purely the result of the changes that have gone within a growing police department and a growing city. So this is just the right time to move in that direction. Any questions?
Any questions? Chief? Bill?
Chief, good report. What do you see as far as training goes, improved or enhanced training goes for the police force going forward now? We looking for any more certifications, or are there any weaknesses in our, or shortcomings, I won't say weaknesses, in our program that could be improved through further training?
I think that we can significantly improve our training by creating strategic partnerships that we haven't in the past. Not only with Alpharetta and Roswell, in fact, I had lunch with the two chiefs there today about, about improving our abilities to work together in that area, but also with some of the surrounding counties. Cherokee County, just to the north, has a fantastic training complex there, really second probably just to Jipstick, and it's just a few miles away, and their sheriff is a very friendly sheriff and wants to share his resources. And it's just a few miles away and their sheriff is a very friendly sheriff and wants to share his resources with us. So all they're looking for is in exchange that we provide some trainers and now we have use of their complex. So it's those types of opportunities that, that I think, that I know we can better leverage to improve our training. Additionally, we have to look across the board at training all of our officers up to a certain level in areas that we know impact the city of Milton the most, with some of the things I've talked about in the past, like traffic accidents. Our officers need to be trained up to a certain level on how to not only take, we're, we're not report takers. We don't go and take a report of an accident. We investigate an accident and we need to bring up that threshold of investigation, that investigational ability a bit higher than to where it is and have a, a bottom threshold and then work from there all the way up to accident reconstructionists. And that's some of the things that we need to do. And you, I could say the same thing when we're talking about crime analysis capabilities, criminal intelligence capabilities, special investigative capabilities. And those are the areas where I plan to focus on coming here.
Further to that, with the increasing terrorist threats that we've seen, how do you think we stand as far as responding to terrorist activities in the, in the area?
For what I'm allowed to talk about publicly, we seem to be more of a, what is more concerning to me right now is domestic terrorism. That's not to say we are right outside one of the largest cities in the country and history will dictate that a lot of the planning, pre-planning goes on in the areas outside of the, the main target. But right now, some of my bigger concerns are some of our domestic terrorism, things you're seeing in the news currently right now. And from what, from what I've been advised through my clearance, that just a little bit rises to more of a concern. That doesn't mean we forget about foreign terrorism, but domestic terrorism is an issue here. Thank you.
Okay, Matt?
I would just love to see an org chart at some point, if you have it, just for my understanding of how, how everything's going to go and look at it. If someone ever asks, how do you, how are we doing things in my general, well, you have these guys that do this, these guys that do this. So that would be very helpful.
I'll, I'll make sure that that gets forwarded. What I've been asking for, apparently the current software can't create, I'm asking for a servant-based leadership org chart.
Sure.
So I appear at the bottom instead of the top. Apparently we don't have software that can create that, so we are in the process of, uh...
Through the page upside.
That's a free way to do it. I will get you one in the current version. I just, I was trying not to publish that too much because I'm trying to change a little bit of the...
Sure.
Philosophy's environment within the department.
Got you.
Okay, anything else? Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
For good luck.
Next up, we have Carter with Public Works.
Please get far.
Two minutes, Carter.
Okay, next?
You'll be glad to know that I have a son stranded at school, so I'm going to go quick through this to grab him. But, okay, three seventy-two, the project down in Crab Apple, which is the Northwest Connector Road. That's been turned over to GDOT, right-of-way acquisition is complete and they've got that out to bid now. We anticipate those bids coming back in October. One of the things you heard in Stacy's update is we also anticipate that project to come in over what has been allocated as far as the budget is concerned based on where we ended up with right-of-way acquisition costs and what we've seen from other construction projects coming in with the North Fulton CID and Roswell. We anticipate those projects, or that project to come in high. The funding you see in the capital improvement plan, the four hundred and seventy-nine thousand for this year was anticipated to cover our local match for those additional funds. It does not cover the federal match. And so while we have requested some funding from both GDOT and from ARC, we don't anticipate hearing back on those requests until later this year and early, early next year, depending on where that funding might come from. One of the things you heard from Stacy on the allocation of some of those additional funds that we had was adding some additional money to that project. I think even if we go above our normal twenty percent match on that project, it might help us a long way in securing some funding either from ARC or GDOT. So that's what that consideration was for, to add some additional local money above our normal twenty percent. Hopewell Road of Birmingham, we've worked our way through some utility issues on that, utility relocations on that, so that intersection is back up and running. Weather permitting, they'll stay on that job continuously now until it's complete. Highway nine Bethany Bend project, I know Councilman Moore, you had some questions on that. That concept report was approved by GDOT. Some of the things that we looked at for some short-term intersection improvements are being considered right now by GDOT as well as how to fund some of those. Some of those we'll probably try and assist at the local level where we can. One of the primary ones, probably the installation of the right turn lane from Bethany Bend westbound onto Highway nine. Northbound was not considered in the short-term improvements because of utility conflicts in that particular area and the cost associated with that. But some of the signal improvements, timing improvements, turn movements, those types of things are being considered by GDOT and we're working on that now.
And that would also include the issue that we have with somehow, and I don't know how you do it, but from a signalization standpoint where we have the conflict of people trying to turn right on red actually going almost into the left-hand turn lane or the southbound from Bethany Bend.
It's been considered to restrict that, no turn on red. So they would get a green arrow up until the point where you get that left turn movement coming through, so.
Okay.
That is something that GDOT's looking at right now, too. Big Creek Greenway Connection, another project we've got going. That concept report has been completed and submitted to GDOT, so we're just waiting on a concept team meeting for that to go through that with them. Once we get through that process, we'll be back to you all to give you an update on that as well as City of Alpharetta and the North Fulton CID who are partners on that.
Do we have any preliminary cost estimates on that scheme?
Uh, we do. I don't have them off the top of my head. But, but that was part of the concept report. And they'll continue to look at also funding alternatives before the final part of report is done.
When do we anticipate that's going to be?
Ha, good question. When you work through any of those projects with GDOT, trying to get on those schedules. But I would hope within the next thirty to sixty days, we would be able to get that concept team meeting going and that's really our next step.
Good deal.
Pavement management, they've been out and about on pavement management component of it. They'll be working on Broadwell and Providence Road will be the next ones coming up. They've got some subdivision work they're finishing up this week after the holiday, then they'll be moving on to those two roads. We just actually, believe it or not, finished a big stormwater project on Providence Road right in front of Summit Hill Elementary School. Whether you saw that happening or not, hopefully you didn't. Some of our best jobs are done if you know, know we were ever even there. So we had a failed pipe under deep Providence Road right there in front of Summit Hill Elementary.
Right where the sheet bar?
Right where the sheet bar and we did a pipelining project on that, so that's wrapping up. Now you probably see some equipment out there still, but they're cleaning that up and finishing that project. And then we'll start on the paving project hopefully in the next week or two, depending on the weather. Transportation master, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a schedule on the brief paving?
I can get that for you. Matt, it changes daily with the weather, so I'll get that from Matt and get that to you.
And the priority, the priority?
Yes. Transportation master plan with Kimley Horn. That project has kicked off and we had their first public meeting in the Milton High Football Game last week. Kind of an informational meeting and trying to get the word out to the general public. So you'll be seeing more and more of that over the next couple of months. Tomorrow night, September tenth, Georgia four hundred and Magensberry Interchange Public Information Meeting is going to be held with GDOT and Forsyth County up at Lunar Technical College. So if you have an opportunity to go up there.
Between five and seven.
Five and seven, that's what I'm trying to remember the time. It's kind of an open house, so there's no formal presentation on it. If you have any time during that period to get up there, you can get some information on that meeting straight from GDOT and Forsyth County, so.
You know, did we, did we already send out, and I apologize if it, if I missed it, sent out like an email push to let our residents know about that?
We did, we did that through our social media sites, so.
Okay.
Yep. I got that out through Facebook and Twitter. And it was in the paper, local paper, I saw it.
Yep.
We're still working on a resolution, is that correct?
Still working on a resolution. Yes, we are, had Kimley Horn as part of the CTP take a quick look at what information they could in this area to kind of get an idea of the impact it would have on Milton. So we're digesting that a little bit and we are looking at either a resolution just from the city or possibly a joint resolution with the City of Alpharetta if we both agree on the same thing. So working towards a meeting on with Alpharetta to work through those issues.
Is that, is Kimley's report available?
It is. If you'd like me to send you a copy, I can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carter? Is that it, Carter?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, Parks and Recreation? Hey Jim, I got, before you make your report, I gotta, you know, give you a hand or a pat on the back. I somehow got volunteered to serve on the Booster Club Board and dealing with kids and parents and sports, it's, uh...
I thought city issues were tough.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. We've, we've had a very busy summer, Parks and Rec. First of all, the two projects at Northwestern Middle School where we converted dead space into usable field space are nearly complete. The smaller field, there was a larger one and a smaller one. The smaller field is done. Fed Sig is done and I'm doing the walkthrough on it on Monday. We're also going to do the walkthrough on the larger field where this is where we converted a baseball softball field into a baseball softball and lacrosse field. Through a little bit of onsite engineering, we were able to exceed what the goal was of how much space we're going to build. However, we did come across a complication in that we have discovered that the main power feed was not as low in the ground as it needs to be in one fifty-foot stretch. So we are coordinating with Fulton County School Board. They have been wonderfully supportive of us and on Columbus State when the school is closed, we will be coordinating with Georgia Power to rebury that power cable and get it down to about three feet where it's supposed to be instead of the six inches it's at right now. So, so that was a little bit of a complication to us. We also resotted all five IGA fields successfully and I, I do want to once again remind you folks, we did have a problem over at Friendship Community Park and our vendor, Triscape's, took it on their own to acknowledge that they could have checked out the irrigation system beforehand and their position was that this was their bad and they resotted the entire field at no extra cost to the city. They have been a wonderful partner to work with on the seven projects, the five residing as well as the two Northwestern projects. All of this, all the fields, the grass is growing and looking really good. And it, it also makes a statement not only to the citizens who use it, but also to the schools we partner with, that we are sticking with our commitment of maintaining these fields. As far as any work on Bell Park, I'll, I think I'll defer to Carter on that, but the project is moving along and I'll let Carter speak on that. Work at Providence Park continues. You may recall a couple of weeks ago, you approved a contract for some fencing repairs and maintenance. McIntyre Fence did a fabulous job for us. They, they called me and they said, hey, we've got an extra crew, you mind if we double up? I don't have a problem with that. And they absolutely blew through it. They did a fabulous job. All the fencing around the pit looks as good as we can make it, considering we have four different styles of fencing that have been blended. All unnecessary fencing has been removed. We built a four-board fence behind the lodge to, as a stop, to encourage people to stop walking past the point because there's a stone wall you could fall off twelve feet. We've also done a lot of work on cleaning up the facility. Optec's been doing a lot of work. I, I myself have been going out there as I learn more about the park. We also, Kathy and I grabbed some trash as well. We've gotten rid of some of the very large debris. The propane tank is gone, some of the other equipment's gone. We did a tour about two weeks ago with Carter, Stacy, Sam, Roddy, Van Keys, who's the part-timer who's working with me, and Scott Dolph of YMCA to evaluate the work already done and to come up with a list of things and prioritize what do we have to do before we can open that up. And that is a list that Carter and I are going through right now. Maintenance building is, contract's being prepared to have it taken down. And next Tuesday, the lodge will be boarded up, pending any decision of what happens there. We'll have the lodge safely boarded up as compared to where it is right now. Let's see, what else do we have here? Camp Truffus Holes. I told you we had big numbers with Camp Truffus Holes. We finally got some of the statistics back. Approximately twenty-five percent of the participant parents did respond to us. Overwhelmingly, they're very pleased with it. They would love more field trips if we could find money, funding for that. But the biggest thing they did ask for is get us back into the school. We were very, very appreciative of the church. Everyone was very complimentary of the church. But as a long-term answer, the, the facility at Community of Christ Church is just too small. So we're going to work to get back to Hopewell Middle School. I've already had meetings with the principal and he has already told me we are welcome with open arms to come back to Hopewell Middle School. That's a good thing. There's going to be a meeting this week with the City of Alpharetta to discuss the parks agreement and see what hopeful positive changes we can make there. I think we have a very compelling story that we can tell to City of Alpharetta of success that we have scored when we compare where this City of Milton was at in June of 2012 when this all started to where City of Milton is at now here in September of 2015. So we're excited and hopeful for that. And then the last thing I want to let you know is we have two bids on the street right now. One bid is for the maintenance of Bell Memorial Park physically inside the fields. Optec currently has the contract for anything outside the fields. In years past, the agreement was with the Hopewell Youth Association to maintain inside the fields. That's not the case anymore, especially since there's fields that Hopewell Baseball wouldn't even be using. So we have to come up with our own contract for that. And the second one, which has hit the street today, is to get a concession stand operator. Again, in the past, Hopewell Youth Association ran it, but we now have three, possibly four different entities looking, you know, you know, that would be operating at Bell Park. We're working very hard. Of course, we have the Milton Steelers football program, we have Hopewell Baseball, we have the Boys Lacrosse. We are looking at gaps we have, we project we'll have in scheduling and we want to bring some of the girls lacrosse, some of their games to the field as well. And this way the girls can benefit from being on the turf field as well. So the growth is, is calling for it. So that's my whole report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions for Jim?
Question, Jim, on the lodge, does that have restroom facilities right now out at Providence?
Well, there are rooms that at one time were bathrooms. They're now pretty much destroyed.
Okay. So we really don't have facilities?
No, no, there's, there's no water at the facility right now. The lodge itself was previously served by a well, that well was shut down as a result of the EPD efforts. And even if we had water right there now, these, a porta potty would be better than what we have right there, right now.
Okay.
Bill?
Jim?
Sir?
We talked a couple of weeks ago about Providence and I think the conclusion that we came to was we need to master plan that. Have you requested any funding?
Yes, sir.
For master plan?
Yes, that's in the capital, capital money.
I believe there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's already programmed for Providence Park for FY sixteen.
Was how much?
Two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand.
We plan to do that or sub it out or do that in-house?
I think we'd be better served if we had a professional organization help us with the master planning of that park.
Anxious to see that come through.
Yes. Also, one thing I did fail to mention, we've got a long list of Eagle Scouts that are excited to be doing projects at Providence Park. And so we've got a, a young man named Matthew Rec who's already volunteered to step up and he's going to renovate the amphitheater. That's on the east side of the park.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah?
Carter's gone, but I guess Bell Memorial Park scheduled for... Carter's gone, but I guess Bell Memorial Park scheduled for...
Right. There's an opening scheduled for October 3. That's what we're looking at right now.
Right. Is that 9 to 10 or something?
Pardon?
That's for the grand opening, that's Saturday.
Yes.
And there's, and then from that point on, it's pretty much good to go. Figure out how this is gonna work and...
Well, they're just rocking and rolling and starting pushing it as much as they can.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We have community development.
I am Michelle McIntosh-Ross with the Community Development Department, and I will be presenting for Kathy Field tonight. The items in queue for the community development is the Conservation Subdivision Ordinance. We'll have the consideration to adopt the Conservation Subdivision Ordinance, Chapter 50, Article 5, on September 21st. It'll be at the Mayor and City Council. The amendment to the Rural Viewshed, RZ 15-15. Consideration to amend rural viewshed within the rural Milton overlay for single-family type uses, Section 64-1141A. Staff is recommending withdrawal for that one. It is scheduled to be at the council work session on Monday, September 14th, 2015, and at the Mayor and City Council, Monday, September 21st, 2015. The adoption of the capital improvement element and the development of the impact fee ordinance. Consideration of the adoption of the capital improvement element, the CIE, as an amendment to the Milton 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and consideration of the adoption of the Development Impact Fee Ordinance, and the creation of Chapter 11 of the City Code of Ordinances. This will be discussed at the work session on Monday, September 14th, 2015, and at the Mayor and City Council meeting Monday, October 5th. That'll be for a vote. At that point, we can start charging fees if you adopt that. Resonings, RZ 15-14, U15-04, and VC 15-03. This is located at 3503 and 3505 Bethany Bend. The applicant is West Dariem LLC, and the request is to rezone from ONI Office Institutional and RG, AG1 Agricultural to ONI Office Institutional, and a use permit for a private school, Section 64-1831, to expand the existing school from 2,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet for up to 150 students. The two-part concurrent variance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improved setback to a 20-foot landscaped strip along the north property line, Section And to reduce the 100-foot setback for recreation areas to 20-foot along the north property line, Section 64-1831B4. The public hearings for this item, Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, September 23rd, 2015, and the Mayor and City Council meeting Monday, October 19th, 2015. U15-05 and VC 15-05, the location is at 13650 Bethany Road. The applicant is the Bethany's Rest Inc. Request to, you, they're requesting a use permit for a retreat, Section 64-1821, in AG1 Agricultural, on 26.65 acres, using, using the existing structures. A concurrent variance to allow the existing vegetation within the 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, and not to plant additional vegetation, Section The public hearings are the Community Zoning Information Meeting, Tuesday, September 29th, the Design Review Board, Tuesday, October 6th, Planning Commission meeting, Wednesday, October 28th, and the Mayor and City Council, Monday, November 16th. The text amendments, RZ 15-18, consideration to amend the AG1 Agricultural District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2. RZ 15-19, consideration to amend the R1 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 3. RZ 15-20, consideration to amend the R2 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 4. RZ 15-21, consideration to amend the R2A Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 5. RZ 15-22, consideration to amend the R3 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 6. RZ 15-23, consideration to amend the CUP, Community Unit Plan District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 23. And RZ 15-24, consideration to amend the Rural Milton Overlay for Single Family Type Uses, Section 64-1141. All of these will be, will have public hearings and meetings. Community zoning information meeting, Tuesday, September 29th. The Planning Commission meeting, Wednesday, October 28th. And the Mayor and City Council meeting, November 16th. That completes my presentation.
Okay, any questions? No?
Two rezonings on Bethany Road. Where approximately are they? Is one into the Morning Star Church on the corner of Cardburn?
The, well, there's one on Bethany Bend, that's the one near...
Is that Red Apple?
Exactly, right. And then the other one, I'm not sure where, on Bethany Road, but it's, it's not Bethany Bend.
Where the, where the pretty pond is, right there at the corner of Providence and Bethany.
Okay.
Oh, Schultz is...
Yeah.
And that's, is that where the retreat is going?
Right. The retreat is the 26.65 acres on, near Providence.
Good news.
Okay.
Yeah, nice.
All right. Thank you. Did we leave fire out on purpose or...
No, they're not tonight.
They're not tonight.
It's all good stuff anyways, right? If you were doing a report on fire, it'd be all good, right?
I don't believe Sarah is here tonight to give a report on economic development. But I do want to say, I'm kinda going out on a limb here. I believe the October 3rd date for the ribbon-cutting ceremony for, for Bell Park is a tentative date at this point. I think that has not been publicized because it is still under construction and it's still, I guess, pending right now. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Rather it be done right.
Yes.
We've waited a long time to open it, might as well get it right.
All right. Anything else? Anybody here? Matt?
Yeah, we have to mention that Bill and Karen on the Friends of Milton Library have worked extremely hard to have a great barn and grand opening happening this coming Saturday for everybody to come. It'll be at 10:00 AM. And we'll make sure Karen's got the agenda down to under 30 minutes. But it's gonna be a, a great event and the very first official bookstore in Milton. And a lot of people will be there, so it should be a great time. We're serving ice cream.
Ice cream sundaes, Coke floats.
Exactly.
I got all, we got all the toppings, sprinkles, whipped cream, chocolate syrup.
We'll have giveaways.
Oh, yeah.
And, and come see the great work that Bill has done. Bill has done a fantastic job constructing that thing as well. And, you know, everybody gave a lot of support to make that happen. And so be a part, be proud of this as part of the community, we're glad to have you there.
Good deal. If you don't have anything else, we'll adjourn immediately. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It sounds like I've got a, first, a motion, and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.